Thank you very much for joining us on #TheKeyPoints. Now, after months of public debate mainly in the media on a private members' bill named the Proper Human Sexual Rights and Ghanaian Family Values Bill, public hearings for the bill have started in parliament. And we are anticipating that over the next 10 weeks or more, Parliament's Legal, Constitutional and Parliamentary Affairs Committee will hear presentations. They will pose their questions to seek clarity on the views, you know, put forward. The early sessions, which were on Thursday, have raised questions about whether really the Private Members' Bill meets the minimum standard that would allow it to progress. And that is, it should not incur costs on the consolidated fund. And the majority of the memos also come from religious groups and activists against LGBTQ+. So what challenges or what does this present for the committee's work looking ahead? There were no sittings on Friday, but we understand sittings will resume on Monday. And I want to welcome our guests to the studio. Professor Tetsiwa Menu is a professor emerita and also an academic. She belongs to the group of 18 CSO leaders who are social rights activists and also intellectuals. And we also have with us in the studio the Bishop Dr. Gordon Kise. Bishop Dr. Gordon Kise is with the Miracle Life Gospel Church. And he is also head of the life schools as well. And is a well-known preacher and pastor of pastors, as he is known. You are welcome, Bishop Gordon Kise. Many thanks for joining us as well. All right, and then of course, we have Dr. Santi Yabua remaining with us. So I'll turn to Professor Emerita Tetsiwa Menu and ask first. So the first day of public sittings was really much anticipated. I know that the group of 18 were up to present. Then also the human rights advocacy group. And then we also learned that the Ghana AIDS Commission was going to be there together with the Church of Pentecost. What for you, you know, was insightful about the first day of hearings?
Thank you very much, Jifa. Good morning and good morning to your guests. And thank you for having me on your show. Yes, so we went to parliament on Tuesday, Thursday, sorry, as invited by the committee to assist them in their deliberations. As you know, we had presented a memo and we went to parliament house. I think that we were grateful that we were given a hearing. We believe that the committee was fair and listened to us carefully, asked us a lot of questions. And we believe that they will take our submissions seriously and that it will assist them in coming to a decision on this bill, which we find most heinous, most obnoxious and against all the tenets of the Constitution, which all members of parliament are sworn to uphold. We know that like the law is in the bosom of the judge, parliament is also the ultimate lawmaker. However, in making laws, they are sworn to the oath that they took as members of parliament and to Article 1, specifically 112, 1 and subsection 1 and 2 of the Constitution, which lays down the procedure for making laws, that laws must be made consistent with the provisions of the Constitution. So we know that this has been a very emotive issue. We heard especially from the church groups present about their numbers and how many more memos they could have brought. But the issue is not about numbers. It is not that the law does not take into account the values and sentiments of the people. And yet, knowing all of this, the frameness of the Constitution insisted that both in Article 1, subsection 1 and 2, in Article 93, 2 of the Constitution, that laws, the lawmaking power must be exercised in accordance with the Constitution. So we are not allowed to substitute our views, our emotions, however widespread and popular, for what the Constitution says. And the Constitution has carefully set out a chapter on the freedoms, the fundamental freedoms and rights of all persons, including people who are not even Ghanaians but who live in Ghana. And it does a very careful balancing act of setting out these freedoms and also the conditions under which those freedoms can be tampered with. And our insistence is that this bill that is currently before parliament displays no such overwhelming public interest issue of public health. The issue of public morality is sometimes brought into the argument. The Constitution is very careful. It is only when we are talking about the freedom of the media and expression that issues of public morality come in in Article 162 of the Constitution. So the Constitution is really very careful. There is nothing about public welfare. It is about public interest and public health. And we argued in our memorandum and also very forcefully on Thursday that no such interest has been betrayed. In fact, on the contrary, we found the bill very thin on any evidential or empirical grounds. And in the one instance where there was an attempt to base it on empirical grounds, it was a wrong inference. We have to be very careful what we do with statistics. You can wave it around, but you know, people are not statisticians for nothing. So you don't just take a figure and start making what you want out of it.
Okay.
So I would say that it was a good day. And we believe that in the end, reason and good sense and adherence to the Constitution will prevail.
Bishop Kise, so you followed the hearings that day, Thursday. Now, for you, what was insightful about the various views that you heard?
Thank you very much.
We know what the church stands for. I'll come to bits of that. But for you, what were the various issues that were insightful that emerged?
Okay, thank you very much. And a good morning to all your viewers. And I also want to thank all of you for the opportunity to share what the church stands for and what the Ghanaian society is looking for. Society evolves. And so as our learned friend spoke, Professor...
Tetsiwa Menu.
Tetsiwa Menu. She alluded a lot to the Constitution, which is true, that we are all governed by the Constitution. So before even I go further, I want to say that the bill is enshrined and is grounded in the Constitution of Ghana. And I want to read Article 39 of the Constitution, so that she can, all of us can pay attention to that. I read Article 39 of the Ghanaian Constitution, 1992, subsection 2. "The state shall ensure that appropriate customary and cultural values are adapted and developed as an integral part of the growing needs of the society as a whole. And in particular, that traditional practices which are injurious to the health and well-being of the persons are abolished." We know how homosexuality is injurious to many people's health. We know how individuals have suffered through this homosexuality and all the LGBTQI+. We are also aware that the state seeks to protect its being. And so the church is not outside of the state or the people of the state. The church is not just pushing numbers around because numbers will speak for themselves. Ghana is not a secular perceived state as is being touted and thrown about. Neither is Ghana a religious or quote-unquote Christian state. None of it stands. But Ghana by far subscribes to a representative democracy, where we have the people representing us carry the views of the people. So if we have 70% of Ghanaians, Christians, and their lawmakers have consulted with their constituents, and the constituents are saying, this is what we think we need. The Muslim community says, this is what we think we need. The Christian community says, this is what we think we need. The intellectual community says, this is what we need. Because the group of 18 is not an embodiment of all intellectuality in Ghana. There are bishops who are intellectuals. There are pastors who are intellectuals. There are also academics. And there are professors who are intellectuals. There are also academics. So let us not think that we are for or we are against. It shouldn't be seen as a for and against argument. It is the total well-being of Ghana. For instance, right now, there are people who haven't spoken, but they are on the fence. And we all have a conscience and they know what is right. You know, in the Akkan Proverbs, we have a proverb which says that, "Obi injure abofranyame", meaning as a child is growing, he knows God. He knows the things which God allows him to do. If you hear of some of these practices in the years past, it's so abominable and it's so detestable. So when it was starting, it was seen as a behavioral practice. So they say, okay, this is our preferences. This is our preferences. So we should be giving space as our preference. Now it has moved from space for preference to a right. And then from a right to become an imposition of the right. So I am not to say that we hate homosexuals. I'm not to say that we are against homosexuals. God loves everybody. We have friends who are homosexuals. We have pastors who are homosexuals. There are people... Yes, we have. And they are... Well, I don't have to speak on certain now, but there are pastors who are homosexuals. Because they conduct gay marriages. And if that is their preference of a lifestyle, we need to help them out so that they come out of that practice. The people who are pastors, the people who are gay, the people who are LGBTQ, they are creatures of God. They are created by God. God loves them. So I want us to draw that conclusion that we hate them. We don't hate them. It is the practice. Now let me come to the bill now. The bill is Bill to Promote Proper Human Sexual Rights and Ghanaian Family Values. So the bill again is a bill to promote proper human sexual rights and Ghanaian family values. That is the bill. Now, the bill seeks to say that Ghanaians have a way of life. And Ghanaians want to protect their way of life. In the US today, it is so sad to say that you can't even pray in schools. When a student, even a pupil, was praying over lunch and then during that time...
Bishop, let's restrict ourselves to Ghana. Let's stop this ad hominem arguments.
Good. We are restricting ourselves to Ghana, but we also have to take cue from how some societies have degenerated where the Ghana...
No, no, no. You are saying you are doing something specifically for the Ghanaian society, please.
I will restrict myself to Ghana. Thank you very much, Prof. So in a Ghanaian society, when things begin and they are not checked, I mean, it will be beyond our view to hold.
Okay, but Bishop, in talking about things happening in the Ghanaian society, who is to determine what Ghanaian family values are? Because we all come from different cultural upbringing. We all come from different religious upbringing. I mean, as for deciding to police what is human sexual rights, that seems beyond going the bounds of really what the church is supposed to do. The church is supposed to administer, or should I say, feed its flock spiritually, ensure that they are prepared for whatever it is they look ahead. But trying to police people's sexual rights or Ghanaian cultural values, I'm not exactly sure if that's within the domain of the church.
Thank you very much. You know, action and reaction, they are equal and opposite. And that's the third law of thermodynamics. So if you throw a ball to the wall, the ball comes back to you. Now, the church didn't just come out from dreaming and then say this. It was when people were trying to impose their religion or their rights onto everybody. Because you see, when you make...
I'm not exactly sure who was trying to impose anything.
Good, I will explain. If I start making noise here, and I said, Jifa, don't worry, it's me making noise. Allow me to make my noise. I will start finding out what I can do to prevent your noise from disturbing me. So the Ghanaian society is at the verge of social pollution. And if the society allows itself, the society will be polluted in the time before we wake up. The bill is not about us. It's not about Prof. It's not about me. It's about our children.
Okay, but you say it's about children.
The future.
The future.
Yes.
Okay, but Professor Tetsiwa Menu, I think that is one issue that keeps being thrown out there that it's about children.
Yes.
In terms of the Constitution and the rights given therein, is there a risk of these rights being eroded?
Thank you very much, Jifa. So let me start with something. Article 39 of the Constitution. It is, this is the directive principles of state policy. It is non-justiciable. These are actions that the state must take over time to bring certain practices in conformity with the Constitution. And it talks about using formal and informal means. It didn't say enact a law. And when we talk about practices that are injurious to the health and well-being of individuals, we're talking about widowhood rights. We're talking about...
Female circumcision.
Genital mutilation, etc. So let's be clear about what we are talking about. This idea that Ghana is not a secular state. Ghana is a secular state. It is, we are not in Afghanistan. This is not a theocratic state. It is not a Muslim state. It is not a Christian state. However, everybody is free to practice, profess any religion that they want without imposing it on anybody. This Christian love that the bishop is talking about. In the last few weeks, LGBT, suspected LGBT persons have been attacked. Where is the Christian love? Where is the love? Which church has come out to condemn any of these practices? We can't just be repeating how much we love people when we stand by and see them attacked. The 70% of Ghanaians, they are the same who are Christian. They are the same people who commit corruption. They are the same people who commit adultery, fornication. Adultery is also mentioned in the Old Testament. It's even in the Ten Commandments. Why is the church not pushing for a law against it? What are LGBT people asking for? They have not asked for anything. You were talking about imposition of a right. What right are they asked for? Who has come to, gone to parliament to say, I'm LGBT, do this for me, do this for me? No, it is not imposition of a right. It's suppression of other people. Now coming to children. And before that, you know, Christians, the church and mosque, they deal with sin. The state deals with crimes. Is the bishop telling us that the churches and the mosques cannot do their work? They now want the state to come and save their souls for them? If that is true, then they should just close down all the churches. So we know that it's the state that is taking over all of these things. Because to say that is to admit that somehow the churches and the mosques have lost their way and that without state intervention, they cannot do their work. On the issue of children, Jifa, I'm glad you've asked me this. You know, yesterday I was engaged. And Bishop, last night I couldn't sleep because some churches were disturbing me. So this is what you're talking about. These are the things that you should be policing. You know, some people were just making noise the whole night. But the issue of children, we have to be so careful. First of all, laws are not made in anticipation of something that may happen. The same way our fathers lived and died, we are here, we will die and go. Our children should be seen as fully capable of looking after their interests when their time comes. So the law does not anticipate something that has not happened. There is sufficient protection of children. And we have a Children's Act. There are several provisions in our Criminal Offences Act that deal with children. And we find a lot of redundancies in this law. I don't know how carefully the bishop has read the bill. But if you go through, it is a rehash. Most of the provisions are a rehash of what is already in the Criminal Offences Act with a difference that in some cases, acts that are misdemeanors in the Criminal Offences Act become second-degree felonies. Which means that if you could be jailed for six months in the Criminal Offences Act, suddenly in this act, you will be jailed for three years to six years, which is discriminatory to start with. But on the question of children, we have to insist being LGBTQ, whatever alphabets that have been concocted for it, is not pedophilia. I do a lot of work on children and young people. I look at the crime statistics, defilement, rape, etc. I follow the cases that are prosecuted by the Domestic Violence Victim Support Unit. Most of those acts are committed by heterosexual males. So by all means, let us be concerned about children. Let us punish anybody, straight or gay, who molests, defiles, rapes children. But let us not confuse children. We are sitting here, we know there are ways in which radio stations, TVs, all the pornographic sites that our children are able to visit. There's a broadcasting law that has been waiting to be passed. Why are we not advocating for that to be passed? To protect children. So let us not bring in that we want to protect children. Anybody who abuses children should be sanctioned very severely, whether that person is gay or straight. And the church should concern itself with that, especially at the pastoral level of preaching to their congregation. These things happen where, as the bishop carefully told us, there are even pastors who are gay. There are queer pastors. There are all kinds of people within the church who also participate in these offenses. Let the church concern itself with it. Let us not hide behind this and say that we are trying to protect children. Of course, we should protect our children in every way possible, through the educational system, through the press, the limitations of what they can view. In fact, they are existing laws. They are not just being enforced. That is part of the problem.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not about children.
Thanks, Professor Menu. So Bishop, I think one of the insightful things for me in the hearings on Thursday was that a lot of the presentation made by the churches is based on the good book, the Bible.
Yes.
It is difficult to get dogma to be flexible. Or it's difficult to get dogma to change in any shape, manner or form. So I'm just wondering whether really this is even something the church should be pushing, knowing fully well that there are a multitude of problems that, you know, our religious people face.
Thank you very much. Before I even address the dogma issue, let me address the Criminal Offences Act, section 104, which talks about offenses. That section gives homosexuality as a crime.
It doesn't, sir.
Orange.
What it does...
The one before is about unnatural carnal knowledge.
Yes, I was about to say that. But unnatural carnal knowledge, it doesn't mention homosexuality specifically.
Yes.
Let's be fair. It doesn't mention homosexuality specifically.
Specifically, but you and I know that unnatural carnal act can be man-to-man. It can be man-to-any other means which is not natural. So I leave that interpretation to all of us. Now, when you go further, it talks about incest. Now incest has not come under LGBTQII+. But then so now, if I say that there's a man, I want to have an affair with my... No, the man wants an affair with his daughter, the mother, the sister. As far as LGBT is concerned, that one is fine. Because those people haven't come out to say they should be protected. So you see, there are individuals...
Excuse me, sorry. Bishop, can you repeat that? I'm trying to understand what you're just saying.
Yes, I'm coming. I'm going further to...
No, you're saying that, so you meant, so Bishop tried to say that people who have committed incest and the like or may commit incest.
Incest is a crime.
Yes, it's a crime. So they are not asking for any protections or something.
That's right.
But that's, the analogy is not the same. That's the issue.
My point is this.
Pedophilia is a crime.
Prof, let's allow Bishop to finalize.
I think I have the also option now to maybe interrupt or interfere when I have a point because I allow Prof to speak.
Oh, it's okay, just go, please. It's okay.
I think that she's been interrupting me.
It's okay, go ahead.
To the extent I'm losing my thought.
Bishop, just make your point. So you made the point about incest. They have not come to request any protection of rights.
Yes. And I'm not saying that it is not a crime. We all know it's a crime. Now, the LGBTQII+. What is in the bill for the people who presented the bill? Is that we are protecting, or the bill seeks to protect... Excuse me, I want to read. "The bill seeks to protect, promote proper human sexual rights and Ghanaian family values." So the emphasis of the bill is the Ghanaian family values. The Ghanaian family value is that a man has to marry a woman.
But a man can be single too, can't they?
The man can be single.
A woman can be single too.
A woman can be single.
They can also be a single mother, can't they?
The woman can be a single mother. The man can be a single father. But if the man chooses to marry, the Ghanaian family value, Ghanaian family value, the man naturally will marry a woman.
Okay, but the point is, the LGBTQ community, which is a point Prof has made, they've not asked for anything like that. They've not asked to marry another man officially. The current marriage laws do not even provide for that. I think the fundamental issue is, if somebody is identified as LGBTQ, should they be beaten up? Does the church support people being assaulted?
Good.
Just on suspicion?
The church doesn't say that.
And even if they are caught, shouldn't you rather take them to face the law instead of lynching, mob justice?
The bill makes right for people to be sent to court. The bill talks about if the people are found...
But it's already in our laws.
Yes, but the bill is enforcing it. You see, the bill is saying that our laws, which were dormant for a long time, which now they are trying to use those same dormant laws to come up and say that, look, you have to allow LGBTQ. Now, recently, the people in Accra, the chiefs and elders, it was in the news, that they are saying that a practice of LGBTQ on the land, this is crazy land. This is belief. This is the people of Accra saying that if this is happening in their land, it is offensive to the land.
Okay, but Bishop Kise, are you denying that over centuries, we've never had LGBTQ people?
I do not deny that. I would be here to tell you that when I was growing up, we were told that there was a certain man who was a gay. And the idea even of him being a gay is so abominable. People feared even to go near his house. So that is the ingrained Ghanaian culture.
But he was not assaulted. So I think...
So you're agreeing with me.
I'm raising the issue that at the end of the day, should people be criminalized for who they are?
Now let me still go further since I have the opportunity to share. In the Bible, now come to the book of Romans. Romans, chapter 1, talks about, from verse 17. "For the rain is the righteousness of God revealed from faith to faith; for the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and all unrighteousness of men." So it includes homosexuality. It includes adultery. It includes lying, all kinds of sin.
But the church has turned a blind eye to adultery and all these other sins for a long time.
No.
Men who have had children out of wedlock or women who've engaged in extramarital affairs. No one has criminalized them. In fact, they've been forgiven.
Love the land.
They've been forgiven. So why can we not extend that forgiveness to LGBTQ people and just let them live their lives?
"For the invisible things of him from the creation of the world are clearly seen being..." being understood by the things which are made, even his eternal power. Now, because when they knew God, talking about we as human beings, they glorified him not as God, neither were thankful, but became vain in their imaginations and their foolish hearts darkened, professing themselves to be wise, they became fools and changed the glory of incorruptible God into the image made like the corruptible man, wherefore God also gave them up to uncleanness through the lust of their own eyes. So this is not the way they were born, this is a lust, this is a practice the person is responding to. You see, if you have a lust, it is something that can be, can be helped, you can, you can be helped to come out of that. I keep on reading.
Okay, no, let's, no, I think the point has been made, but you are saying it's a lust. Well, the Ghana AIDS Commission made a presentation at the public hearings. Let's hear what the Director General of the Commission, Mr. Chiahehne, said about who is spreading, you know, HIV infections more, so if we can have that video.
The implications of the bill have far reaching consequences or implications for the work we do to eliminate HIV and AIDS in the country. HIV and TB service providers and the activities they carry out may be construed in this respect. Donor funding for the HIV response covers HIV and TB services for men who have sex with men and transgenders. These health services have nothing to do with the activities the bill seeks to prescribe, but may be construed to be, to be if the bill is passed in its current form. Donors will withdraw their funding if they are criminalized by this bill. HIV program is largely funded by donors and the withdrawal of their funds will certainly jeopardize the HIV response.
All right, so, so, so that's, that's one bit he raised, so quickly address that, then we will play the second one where he talks about who is the driver of HIV infection.
Now, from his submission, HIV is transmitted from man to man.
No, please.
That's what he said.
No, he's, he specified, he specified that they are part of a group of people who have HIV AIDS, who will end up suffering neglect.
Yes.
If this bill is passed, because the donor support that is provided for everyone.
I'll come to the donor support.
We rely on donor support to provide support for all HIV AIDS people.
That's right.
But what it means is if we pass this bill, which is targeting LGBTQ people and MSMs, it means the generality of all the people who need that support will be affected. It's not that they are the drivers of HIV infections.
From his submission, man to man, that is one of the means by which HIV AIDS, I mean, is passed.
And it's only fifteen percent.
It's fifteen percent, good. And then he also said transgender.
So it means the eighty-five percent is who?
You and I can answer that.
Is heterosexuals.
Okay.
That's the point. So the, the point is that the risk being hung around LGBTQ people doesn't, it's not as excessive as heterosexual people. Heterosexual people, men sleeping with women, are the major drivers of HIV infections, not LGBTQ people, their number is only fifteen percent, and that's the point he's trying to make.
Okay, that is in the, in the fact that maybe the woman who sleeps with the man is a carrier, that could happen. Now, my answer to his point of on donor funding is that when we pass this bill and then there are less people having man to man or SMS relations, HIV reduces, so there will be less need for HIV funding.
That's not true, sir.
It's one of the submissions.
So what happened, no, eighty, so what happens to the eighty-five percent heterosexuals? Because it means they will continue to drive the spread, the spread driven by men sleeping with men is only fifteen. So the point, the point, so the point really is that the statistics which had been put out earlier had not been accurately presented. It was made to look like LGBTQ people were driving HIV infections, and that for me was one of the insightful things from the hearing, that it is, it is not the case.
Now, let me also.
So the public health argument doesn't hold, that's, so I, I just want to restrict you to, to the point you were making about.
Yes, I'll go ahead and make the point. In the year twenty twenty, just last year, two hundred million dollars was spent by this government, Ghana, to subsidize HIV AIDS. Now, that amount of money can also be used to treat other urgent social needs in our nation. So if we are talking of donor funding, that money, if it doesn't come, we can generate resources, because you and I are here, we are always looking to someone to help us before we can leave. When can we become self-dependent? So if we don't begin to see that Ghana, we should be able to take our, our destiny into our hands and then teach our young people to create jobs and no way to go and line up for jobs to be created from heaven. Because you see, everyone who is an entrepreneur goes through failures, you fail several times and you succeed. But if you don't begin to teach them from the beginning that, look, it's difficult to create jobs, you need to be having integrity, you need character, you need moral values, you need hard work, they will come out of the school with certificates and then they will not be able to create jobs. Now, homosexuality doesn't spring up overnight, it starts in our schools sometimes, it starts with our children and people, that even reminds me, let me finish my thought, I'll come to the pedophilia, good. People can't forget experiences. When a young boy is sodomized, he, he feels a victim, so he wants to visit the victim on other young boys, it begins to spread. So we are not here to say that we are talking just about love in inverted commas, there is a risk that if we don't look at it as individuals and see that this thing is not about the church against the state, you see, if you do that, you are trying to bring one person against the other, that's not the issue. We are here to say that it is in the interest that as for loving, we love every person, the church, the church loves everybody, but God has seen, and has seen is what God wants us or the bill wants to come out with, because the criminalization is already in the Criminal Offenses Act, it's not now that it's coming out.
Okay, so, so I, I think that the main issue now is we already have some of these laws, we should enforce it, we don't need to create a new one.
No, I'm not drawing that conclusion.
You are not drawing that conclusion.
No, I'm not drawing that conclusion. My conclusion is that the bill seeks to enforce the things that are needed to be addressed, and it's in particular the LGBTQ.
So you want specificity.
That's right.
That's what you want.
That's right.
Okay.
The bill in its form addresses things that were not addressed, because at the time when the Criminal Offenses Code in nineteen sixty was passed, the only thing they could handle was homosexuality, they couldn't even think beyond that.
But it wasn't, it's not even specifically mentioned, that's why I'm asking, so you want specificity.
That's right.
You want it to be mentioned.
Society has evolved and is more than just homosexuality, so all those other things that are in addition to homosexuality should be mentioned in the bill.
Okay, let me bring in Richard Asantia Bo, I'm sure you've been enjoying the conversation. So I, I think there's a certain view that this bill will cause some charge onto the consolidated fund and so will not meet the minimum standard of what a private members' bill is. The moment it's going to be charged onto the consolidated fund, it means the executive need to pick it up. You are communications person for government, what is the mood and the sense about where this is headed, especially as you watched the first day of the hearings?
Thank you very much. I think I, I like the sort of discussion that has engulfed this whole bill and the views that are being expressed from all the angles. What excites me is that we are in a participatory democracy and as such, you need people to come out forcefully and pick their minds on things that they believe in, whether they support or they against it, and this is what we need, we don't necessarily involve ourselves in raining insults and insinuations at each other. And I see the level of discussion and intelligence that had been expressed so far on this whole matter from the day this whole bill became public to the Ghanaian. I look at it and one thing excites me, as somebody coming from government, I know one thing that the president has said, and he said it's when he met the Catholic Bishop, that it will not be under his government would census marriage be legalized, it will never happen.
But it's not even been asked for.
No, that's, that's okay, he has said that, that excites me. I'm a true African and a very conservative one like that, and, and I'm a Christian too, so it's pretty obvious that I would not want to countenance anything that had to do with homosexuality and all that. But I equally get the sense that had been expressed by the eighteen individuals, noble men and women who have contributed their quota to the societal development over the years, either in academia or in law and all that, some of them have been taught in before. You, you want to appreciate where they come from and some of the point they express that they are looking beyond what some of us also are seeing, they are thinking that, you know what, there are things that you need to tone down on, they are thinking that to endanger people.
What, what, do you have, do you have some views on provisions of the bill that need to be toned down? Because for instance, there are provisions in the bill that demand reporting of family members, is that what, is that what is appropriate?
You know what, I, I will not pick the individual provisions.
Why not?
And seek to, because the point is then the program we need to be extended, because there are a good number of, a good number of them that I think when you read, you want to sort of say that, but you see, that's why it's going through the cooking stage, that thing is not ready for, to be consumed, it is still before parliament. All these stages and everything that is going through, there are three things that is most likely to happen, that it will be fine tuned to certain level where everybody can come to the compromise and agree to certain extent, or to get to a point, people talk, you know what, the point being made by the other side, this present constitution addresses it, so we can stick to that. Or some, if you get to a level, then we, our pastors and some of us who believe that we want not to entertain any concept that seeks to add additional behaviors and conduct in terms of people expressing their sexual desires, which has limitless ends, tomorrow it applies, you can marry a three.
Limitless, limitless.
You can marry a sea, I mean, all those, but the point is that you get the sense that indeed, those who are also speaking for, they are not asking that they believe that we should legalize homosexuality in Ghana, they are not saying that. I'm not sure I've heard any of them say that they are, they believe in that and they want to promote that and they want to set up NGOs, asking people to, recruiting people to become homosexuals, I've not heard it.
In fact, they have not said that.
They've never said that.
All they are asking for is that.
That they are looking at.
These individuals are Ghanaians, they are entitled to a life of peace, a life to work, a life to.
But the constitution already provides for that, because you cannot.
And that is exactly the point, that, that why talk about, why talk about a promotion of proper human rights, sexual Ghanaian family values bill, when the constitution, which is the leveller for all of us irrespective of where you come from, provides that, why, why do we?
When you look at the current constitution, it even goes beyond what we are trying to look at, you see, you realize that it talks about unnatural carnal knowledge.
That is the criminal code.
Yes, it gives you an idea that, you know what, it is not only about a man doing something to a man.
I'm not sure it gives me any idea, it, it just, it doesn't give me any idea, it just lists what.
It tells you that, it tells you that.
And it speaks specifically about.
That a man can also have a relationship with a woman sexually, which would also be an affront to the law, because they do not go through the, the natural means of doing it.
So I'm waiting, I'm waiting for a court to sentence some man and woman or vice versa.
Remember that, you know, remember that the law, the law deals with evidence.
So the point, aha, great.
I hope you're getting me, and not, it deals with evidence, that is why, because the criminal aspect that we are looking at, you want to sort of have both ingredients, the menswear and the attitude in terms of the ingredients.
The point is for governments.
All meeting before any court will pass judgment on that.
But I asked you a question, you've not answered me, it seems that this bill may lead to a charge on the consolidated fund, and so there is a view that it may not meet the minimum standard of a private members' bill, because it should not cause any additional cost.
I agree, I agree.
So what about that?
I, I think, like I said, parliament is a master of its own laws and also rules. In terms of dealing with that particular aspect of it, I think that for us, and as for me, my thinking is that we all not to move, dwell on technicalities, to either scrap it or to push things forward, because if you go beyond, if you go through that angle, then you will not satisfy anybody. Now, the debate is what is important, because, I mean, people will change their stance, people would come to the middle ground, we all come to understand and appreciate what ought to be done as a people, you understand what is being pushed, you understand the aspect that people speak about in terms of human rights and all that. But the point is, you, at the end of the day, what will be of relevant to me is that there wouldn't be a situation whereby a point will come in Ghana, where a church can say that I'm going to put a man and a man together, that is what I will be happy, never to happen.
Okay, let, let's hear Professor Tetchiwa Menou, I think Richard Asantia Bo is.
Jifa, you kept me out of the conversation for a while.
Beg your pardon.
So I want to address a couple of points.
Yes, please go ahead.
Here's a bishop, and I mean, no, I'm not attacking him, I heard a bishop talking about foreign things, he's dressed in a suit, he's wearing glasses, everything that you are wearing is not made in Ghana, so let's take our foreign arguments properly, you know, it's amazing, suddenly the Pentecostal and, and the charismatic council. I've become the defenders, please, let me finish, I've become the defenders of Ghanaian culture and values. This issue about foreignness, Ghana subsists on foreign loans and foreign investments, et cetera, when it, when it suits us, we drive foreign cars, everything that we aspire to is foreign, and yet when we choose, suddenly we are this nationalistic, let the young people do this, let the young people do this, let's start with ourselves, let's eschew all the foreign things, the phones made by, designed by a gay person that we are using.
She started by using that example, so she couldn't use the same example.
Bishop, let me finish, when I finish, you can talk.
Good.
So there is this other issue of stringing together a whole lot of things, LGBTs, this bill confuses sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression and sexual characteristics, and makes a mockery of itself with the plus, plus, plus of things that it doesn't understand. There are Ghanaian and non-Ghanaian scholars who work on these issues. If the bill makers were serious, they would have consulted some of these works, instead of flooding the Ghanaian space with any kind of, excuse me, silly video, anything from different jurisdictions that we don't understand, a lot of distortions. Today we are told about a world court of justice that does not even exist, there's a European Court of Human Rights, it was talking about same-sex marriage, not about homosexuality, the young man from the MPP, your rights, your preferences, they are your own, nobody's stopping you from being a conservative Ghanaian and a Christian, that is not the point here, we're talking about the constitution and the rights. Now, this argument that section 104 was made in nineteen sixty, before this current session of parliament, there is one of the papers that is, has been put, is an amendment to the Criminal Offenses Act. If we believe that section 104 has had lived this usefulness, it is not precise enough, there is nothing, nothing stopping us from amending it, so let's stop this. Section 104 was a colonial statute, then it got reenacted in nineteen sixty as the section 104 of the Criminal Offenses Act. We are in twenty twenty-one, if we think that there is some ambiguity, et cetera, this, this bill, if you go through it carefully like I have done, it is just full of redundancies, procreation, keeping a brother, trafficking, these are all in the existing law, and as I've said, what this law succeeds in doing is taking provisions that are already there and doubling the punishment. I think if I can be frank, the church is not coming through well, it is not showing compassion, it is not showing charity, like the hostess said, it is just dogma, repeating verses in the Old and New Testament to us, we also read the Bible, we know what is in the Bible.
Professor Menou, Bishop, Bishop mentions a certain concern which I would like you to help us address if you can. Bishop, Bishop mentions a certain concern which I would like you to help us address if you can.
Please tell me.
He says that society evolves.
Right.
And the initial thing was, it was just about homosexuals, mainly men.
Yeah.
But now we are seeing lesbianism, we are seeing other transgender, all these other aspects.
That is what I'm talking about, that is the confusion, it is the confusion. So you just string together, as I said, when you're talking about sexual orientation, you're talking about gays and lesbians. When you're talking about gender identity, you're talking about transgenders and co. When you're talking about sexual characteristics, you're talking about intersex people, you string it all together. The point that the supporters of the bill have to confront is that, even in section one oh four, we're dealing with an act, okay? In this bill, it is one's very identity that is criminalized. You are criminalized for holding out as gay by sex, what crime have you committed, Bishop? If two people, two consenting adults stay in their room, and and we have mentioned that the law makes a distinction between sex and marriage. Sex is a private act, marriage is a public institution. So when you, when you are having sex and you can, you can prove that the people have capacity, they give consent, and it is private. The law has no business with it, that is why adultery is not a crime. That is why premarital sex is not a crime, it can be a cardinal sin in the church, but it is not a crime. So these are the issues we are talking about, so you are the people who are creating the confusion of people by multiplying identities that do not exist, by scaring people with non-existent characteristics. And I wanted to come back to the uh Ghana AIDS Commission study. This was a very specific study of men who have sex with men, it is MSM, not SMS, it's MSM. So it is, it was a very limited study, done in twenty seventeen, the results applied to the year in which it was done. It has been blown out of all proportion. I heard somebody, I was on a program with somebody, says HIV people are, eh eh, gay people are eighteen times more likely. And I talked to the statistician and he says, no, the person doesn't understand statistics. You, what is your comparator that you come up with eighteen times? So as the Ghana AIDS Commission um presentation made clear, when we really go into the population.
I'm sorry, you are watching the time.
And it is not true that, you know, it is gay men who are infecting commercial sex workers and all of those. They are heterosexual men, most of whom are married. And we know that the the seventy-two percent of people living with HIV and AIDS are heterosexuals. And we need to face up to it and stop the usual Ghanaian ostrich mentality of of just ignoring the facts and and just burying it. We have an epidemic of teenage pregnancies. Five hundred and fifty-five thousand young people between the ages of ten and nineteen got pregnant between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty. Just a few days ago, the minister for employment or one of the ministers, they were in the central region talking about finding legal solutions to teenage pregnancies, the legal solutions are already there, let's enforce them. We should stop negotiating with abusers, defilers, families accepting uh goats and cloth and things to let people go free. Every year, a hundred and twelve thousand young people are getting pregnant, teenagers. We are mortgaging our future. If we are really concerned with children, if we are concerned with protecting our future, these are the issues that we should be dealing with.
I think.
Not non-existent offenses of people, ve- very vulnerable people. And as I said, no church, no churchman has come out to say, stop the beating, stop this, this is hypocrisy. What are we doing to protect these people? So it's not about the abstract love that we preach on Sundays, it is the everyday love that we show to people who are vulnerable, people who are being abused and being attacked. So it, let's, let's be very clear, because we, we, we have spent, this is a lot of energy that we have spent in the last six months. And and you see, people got angry when we said, there's nothing Ghanaian about this bill. It follows a pattern. If you go and look at the the bill that has been introduced in Hungary, Moldova, in Uganda, it is the same pattern. It is just a bill of hate, ambiguity.
Okay, Professor Meno, that's where we have to, I have to take, yeah, so I have to take prof uh Bishop's point. So Bishop, she raised some very fundamental issues, which truth be told, I did raise earlier, but you didn't specifically address. So the bits, so I think you can address the bit about pedophilia, the bit about this uh uh sexual uh uh predatory behavior where we see all these young girls who are getting pregnant. The church has not, you know, tackled any of these.
Good. I am, I am happy that the prof is so angry.
No, she's not angry, she's passionate.
She's passionate and pent up about it. But then I'm also surprised she was attacking my person.
No, she didn't attack you, but Bishop, I think she made the point, it's not about your person.
The point I'm, I want to make is that when I address the issue that this thing started in the U S when a small child having lunch and prayed over the lunch. And then the mother said, no, and so took that prayer over one lunch. And then it was ruled that they could not pray in the school, as if it's a private matter in a small school. Now the whole U S, they no more allow prayers in public places.
It is not true.
Well, well, I I I have been in and out several times, I have people.
So have I, so have I, we all lived in the U S, it is not true, Bishop, I'm sorry.
I'm I'm not saying that you have a right to attack personalities.
She's not attacking your person, all she says is that, I beg your pardon, let me rephrase, because she made the point clearly, so she didn't attack you.
She says that.
She said you are wearing foreign clothes.
We choose and pick, we choose and pick when it's suitable for us.
Yes.
Yes, that is how life is. We don't use fire to burn our fingers, we use fire to cook. We don't use water to go and drown in the bath, we use water to clean death on us. So God created us to choose and pick when it is important for us. Now, the bill is seeking that certain people must be given the chance to come and pollute our public space.
But how many, how many of these people?
You see, you seem to take questions.
No, 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 no.
You were listening to her.
No, I listen, it's just that sometimes if I feel like there's clarity that, that's why I would come in.
You can also note them down, because you are very sensitive.
Oh, no, I'm not sensitive.
Okay, okay, passionate.
No, I'm a fair, I I believe I'm a fair abiter.
You are, you are a very fair abiter, very fair abiter, I like your fairness. So my point here is this, this is a view of the whole traditional council. The traditional society of Ghana, they have expressed by the National House of Chiefs, that they are against LGBTQ. The Muslim society in Ghana, they have issued a statement, they are against LGBTQ. The Christian society, the Christian Council of Ghana, they have expressed a sentiment, they are against LGBTQ. The Cali bishops of uh Council of Ghana, they have expressed a sentiment, they are against LGBTQ. Now, the Ghana Pentecostal and Charismatic Council has expressed a sentiment, they are against, against LGBTQ. We have mostly learned eighteen professors and eminent citizens. Are we saying that uh the, all the rest or the majority of Ghanaians are in error? So we should throw their views aside and listen to just these eighteen people? Yes, they have taught us.
So the question is that, the question is that, do we just make a law because we don't like certain kind of people?
No, that's not the issue. The issue is this, the C D D, which I was ho- hoping I'll come to, let me just address that now. The C D D, the Center for Democratic Development, yes, did a study. And out of that study, which was published on the first of July, ninety seven, which I I know two of the persons out of that eighteen eminent people are on that, were there. Now, ninety-seven percent of Ghanaians are tolerant, they they are tolerant of different ethnicity, meaning it doesn't matter your tribe, they can live with you, they don't, they don't really matter, they will live with you. The ninety-four percent are tolerant of different religion. You can be a Muslim, you can be a Christian, you can be a traditional African religionist, they will still live with you, that's ninety-four percent. Ninety-one percent are willing to tolerate people of different political persuasions. Now, seventy-one percent are even willing to live with migrants and foreigners. But when it comes to people with homosexuality, only seven percent say that they are willing to tolerate people with different sexual, whether it's sexual orientations or sexual identifications, but ninety-one percent says no. So the view of the people is what is represented in the bill. It's not a few people who have just stood up and said, we have, we have read the Bible, yes, we have read the Bible. In fact, there's a difference between dogma and doctrine. Now, a doctrine is different from dogma, I want to address that now. We are not dogmatic. A dogma means you you just tell the people to drink petrol and then we just go and drink petrol, that's dogmatic, so please, withdraw that. We are not saying this because we are dogmatic, we are doctrinally sound and we are spazing our argument on doctrine. Doctrine is teaching, because teaching is what makes people who they are. Without teaching, the people perish, because knowledge comes from teaching. The professors taught us, I mean, we all have been taught and we still teach. So this bill is to bring the awareness, and me, I'm happy for the contributions going on. I'm happy that people who were quiet for a long term, now they can get out and speak. People who haven't come to the public domain, now they come, they can come to to the public domain. This thing was so important that last night, I stayed awake, I listened to Professor Tchewa Meno, because her video was sent to me last night. And I needed to listen very well before we met today, I listened to her, I listened to the Ghana AIDS Commission, I listened to them. So you see, we are not just coming out of nowhere and we hate the people, we all know the distinction between sex and marriage. God also puts a distinction between sex and marriage. We are not against people having, uh they are expressing themselves in their sexual orientations. But we are saying that God has standards and we are people created by him. Whether we worship him or not, he created us. And then there are serious health, health hazards, let me address that now. There are serious health hazards that go with homosexuality. There are very serious health hazards. You know, the law is good, but we pastors, we work with the people. So when they have these health hazards, they come to us, they 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 are involved in homosexuality. It goes so bad that some of them, excuse me to say, they were pampers. And and so we are saving people's lives, we are saving people's future, we are saving people's credibility and dignity. So if you look at the law as a group of people just coming and they are coming against people, not at all. That is not what the law stands for. So I want to let everybody know and all our cherished listeners, that the LGBTQ, we are not against them. We are saying that the practice is is not in line with what God wants us to do and what the Ghanaian society, our family values stand for, thank you.
Thank you very much, and that's, I think, is a good way to end, Bishop. Uh, I'll take a final point from Richard and a final point from Professor Meno.
I think uh uh I was still would want to see and hear the argument as it continues.
So for you, you are looking ahead to the rest of the ten weeks of public hearings.
And it's it's good, it's it helps us. And I think that we we, our democracy is evolving, I like the speed at which it is moving. This is what we need in our country, that when issue comes to the fore, people come in and speak strongly, and speak for or against it. Then based on that, we'll be able to fine tune whatever we want to position for the, for ourselves for now and the future. And I think that interests me, let's allow everybody to speak their mind. And I like the fact that people are making their notes, copy those notes, they are countering it, they are making research, I mean, this is what we need.
I think it's one topic that many people have gone to read about, that many of us, many other things, people don't want to read about.
That to all the subjects that come before us as a country, would have gotten far. But every time, yes, every time when matters come around, I mean.
We leave it to the politicians.
And we leave them and people fold their arms, I like the fact that people are coming, and I'm enjoying prof. I mean, there are things I might not agree with her, but the point is, some of the issues, you should speak to it, and you know that, I mean, she's passionate about it. Sometimes personally violent, I know it's okay.
All right, thank you.
But this is beautiful and I think it's good for our country and good for our democracy, let's encourage people to speak.
I think one of the major challenges I see ahead is the group of eighteen, the Africa Human Rights Group, they've presented as of Thursday. I'm waiting to see presentations from the medical people, for instance, in the weeks ahead. But the view we get is that the majority of the memoranda are presented by, uh, you know, religious groups and interest groups aligned with religion. I'm just wondering, for the committee, how then do you sift out through this whole, you know, barrage of information in a bid to come up with something that may be acceptable or not?
Thank you very much, Jifa, I know time is running. You know, if you look at the bill, it has about thirty-six pages. It spends about eighteen pages on its memoranda, it it knows that it has a very hard sell. And then when you go into the uh bill itself, as I said, most of the of the clauses, of the provisions, just repeat existing law, okay? Now, I want to address this C D D survey, and the C D D people on Thursday said to people, stop misusing this survey. In fact, people should be embarrassed about citing it, because what it brings out is that Ghana is a very intolerant society like Jordan, Saudi Arabia, a whole group of people that we don't want to be in. Following this survey, and when Ghana in twenty seventeen, under the same government that this young man is serving, went to Geneva for its uh periodic um universal review. At the end of it, the special rapporteur said to Ghana, there are three recommendations that we are making to you. You can, we suggest that you legalize same-sex marriage, you decriminalize same-sex relations, or you take steps to protect LGBT persons. And as it was Ghana's right to do, Ghana said, no, we will not legalize same-sex marriage. We will not decriminalize uh same-sex relations, but we will protect LGBT people. So this law, this bill, actually flies in the face of that commitment to protect vulnerable people. Um, this issue about church and state, the church should go on, tomorrow is Sunday, Bishop, you and all your flock, please preach to all the gay pastors, the gay congregants, et cetera, continue to do your work. But don't cede your responsibility to the state. The state deals with crime, the church deals with sin, continue to do the same work, that is important. So you are making people suspicious, people are asking, is that why the Church of Pentecost donated a prison to the state so that they can go and put people in it? Now, the issue about the medical grounds, I think that the the issue, the public health justification has been shown to be really not true. We are not saying that we shouldn't deal with gays and lesbians and their health problems. But that frenzy that somehow these people and this, I've heard this pampers story so many times, I just get disgusted, you know, when I hear it. We live in a country, and I'll say it again, where common malaria kills people, children die. And yet, we we are now trying to find, eh, you know, all our resources to treating very complex problems. In nineteen ninety, the World Health Organization took away eh homosexuality as a disease. The UN bodies, they have described conversion therapy, all those therapies that eh the church and the pseudoscientific eh community claim, they they say it is a form of torture. Even in the U S that we like to cite, the American Psychiatric Association, the American Medical Association, the American Association of Counselors, they have all come out to decry this conversion therapy. In Ghana, it is after it stops raining that we bring out our bucket. So now somebody has had conversion therapy and it is all the rage. Let us reserve our resources to deal with the rising communicable and non-communicable diseases, okay? So I I really want to insist that, at the end of the day, as we have said, yes, we've been told the Pentecost, eh, the Pentecostalist and Charismatic Council, they told us they've got three point eight million members. They have got Children's Ministry, Children's Ministry, Youth Ministry, Market Women's Ministry, every ministry, and they are all against it. Fine, that is their right. What they do not, the right they do not have, is to legislate their own beliefs and hates into law. So at the end of the day, Jifa, after the committee has had the medical establishment, all of them, plus the Ghana AIDS Commission, they are going to go back to the constitution, and the constitution says that Article One, Subsection One and Two, and Article ninety-three, Subsection Two, that any law that is made must be consistent with the constitution. So you take this clause and then you look at what it provides, eh, you will not allow eh people to support this. And then you look at the eh chapter five on fundamental. And then you look at the, uh, chapter five on fundamental human rights, does this breach the freedom of expression? Does it breach the freedom of association? That is what the committee will do, step by step. And the threats that are being issued to parliamentarians, I heard it in the room on Thursday. We are watching you. If you don't do this, like one parliamentarian has said, people get disselected all the time. So let us stand up for our belief. Let us not be cowed. Let us continue as people of faith to do what the good book says we should do in our churches and in our communities. Let us leave the state to govern and let the state live up to its responsibilities that it has freely assumed, including to the African Charter.
Prof, sorry, but we have, we have to wrap up. Thank you, thank you very much. And I want to say thanks to our guests. It's been a tighter show. Thanks to Professor Emerita Tetechua Meno. Many thanks to Bishop Dr. Gordon Kise and also to Dr. Richard Asantia Boy. We've been watching Key Points. My name is Jifa Bambo. Have a good Saturday. Up next is Warm Up Plus.